Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The College Media Independent School District 544 to order due to the current federal and state emergency declaration, the Minnesota Directive to residents to stay safe at home. Again, it's about limiting person-to-person contact due to COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting, the Fergus Falls School District is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021. And with that, clerk, will you establish a quorum for us, please?
Yes. Kirby Anderson.
Present.
Natalie Knutson. Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Missy Hermes, present. Steven Vegason.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So.
I'll take Melanie, second. From Steve. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Vegason.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have no resolution of acknowledgements today, so we are going to move right into reports. And our first report is from Derek Abrams, our Activities Director, who's going to give us an update on the year, the past school year. Welcome, Derek.
Thank you. It's been an interesting one, especially once we get spring. Everything changed, but I do have a report here on our fall activities and winter and how everything went. I sent you the report, so if you have any little specific questions. Couple of quick highlights or numbers. Was very happy to see when I pulled them up that our numbers of participants went up again. And it's four straight years where we've had more. Each year we've had more and more participants in our high school activities. That includes some middle school kids, if it's a 7-12 program like Us Country, swimming, things like that. No real red flags on any programs. Some programs, obviously, numbers are key. We want to get those going up there, so we did increase both in the fall and the winter. And again, with our three of these years, with our overall population going down, our number of students going down, our participation going up. That means we have a higher percentage of kids each year that participated. Again, we did very well on the field, everything else, but sportsmanship awards. In the fall, we had quite a few, actually five, or seven sports. Won the CLC sportsmanship. Again, numerous CLC Performers of the Week, All-Conference, and so on. Winter activities, again, big jump, especially in Nordic Ski. You saw that we had quite a few more participants this year. We jumped up from, we had mid-20s. First three years I was here, first two years, that was when we co-op with Bill Kress as an independent provider. Last two years, we were not independent provider anymore. We jumped up from 28 to 46 participants, so many of them young. So that number should hold in the next few years. And again, the winter highlight, part of performance, both boys and girls basketball. Won the CLC championship this year. It's about the third time in 20-some years that the same team was able to win both, boys and the girls. So did real well there. Tucker Hankes participated in the Nordic Ski State Tournament. Dustin Portalis placed third heavyweight in wrestling. Boys basketball was not technically eliminated. They started to really shut things down the day of the section championship game. So we thought that happened, they weren't going to play. And again, boys Nordic Ski with the CLC championship awards. I did a summary up to this point of all of the schools and the sportsmanship awards that they have received. CLC has been around as it stands now for about 21 years. We've been there 14 of the 21 years. And we currently have 89 sportsmanship awards. And again, these are bow down by the coaches. They look at, you're really basing this on one game, possibly two against that opponent. And in order to win the sportsmanship, that means you have to make some kind of impression on multiple enough to where they hopefully. And we have 89. Brainerd, who's been in the league all 21 years, has 91. They have the most. So seven fewer years, we're really close actually to leading the CLC in sportsmanship. So that's a great thing. And you can look down and see all the individual accomplishments, all conference. We did have two Coaches of the Year, CLC Coach of the Year, again, Brad Stran, girls basketball match, and some boys basketball. Couple of real quick highlights, a minute here. We started up something called the Outer Leadership Academy this year, which was a huge success. We didn't get to wrap it up because of COVID, but this is where we had approximately 120 night through 12th graders. And we're just starting to teach them some leadership skills, both in the athletic realm as well as other activities in the classroom, the hallways. And it was very well received, a lot of comments from parents, got some comments from others that they thought it was a good thing. We met about once a month, starting in November. We're going to start that right up in September here. And again, that was a good thing. Continued on our journey towards being an inside-out school, which most of you should be familiar with. And you can see the progress we made there. We did complete a six-week book study with all of our coaches called You Win the Locker Room First. We were going to start it as a breakfast club and meet once a month and go on into next year. But with COVID, we decided to meet every week, and we went six straight weeks. All head coaches were involved from all seasons. There was a couple that couldn't make it to the scheduled time that we had Zoom meetings, live Zoom meetings, but I met with them individually. And at any given meeting, over 80% of our assistants were at one of the two meetings and participated. So that was very impressive when I shared that with our CLC ADs. They were wondering how that ended there. They usually give about 20, 25% volunteer then. So that was a very good session. Social media, we've been really expanding that. Amber Hublin took that on right away, started an Instagram account. Again, that's something that we got a lot of positive feedback, especially from parents. A lot of parents talking about that. They really liked seeing our milestones, our accomplishments, being able to celebrate some of the things that maybe don't get out there as much, just some individual accomplishments by our students. And again, I mentioned student participation. One thing I did add to that, which actually just started up today, is a program called Platform, which we've been talking about for over a year. It's a fitness and weightlifting program that we're going in partnership with our Fayette. And it's basically, it's online, where it's an app where the students can track themselves. They still have a little weight room. Paul Ratz, who does a great job with this, sets it all up and gets them going. But with COVID especially, even though it's something we're talking about doing anyway, this is a great system, and all of our athletes have access to it today. So they can start different weight programs, fitness programs, things like that, which is really what our focus is here in June with our athletes. We all want to get them back out there and get them playing, but with nerd situation, we're really focusing on their conditioning and things like that, especially in the month of June. So we can put that entries, and you get back out there in July or later. So that program is just starting today, and I think that's going to do some really good things for us. Questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Yep.
That's a great report on sports. What about some of the activities like speech?
Speech, did not finish up. I can, I'll send you the numbers. They did not get all the way through their season because they start late January. Once they really start the CLC and the sections is when COVID hit and they canceled everything. So I will, I'm not sure why I don't have that on that list. I'll add that to the list, the participation numbers, which are still there in the past. One Act Play made it to the sections again this year, and good numbers. And they, for about four straight years, they made the top four in the subsection. And then moved on to section performance in Alexandria. Is there one on this there? Yep.
Other questions? Can I just ask on that participation numbers, just on like Nordic skiing and then the figure skiing? Gymnastics, is that seven through 12?
Yes.
On those numbers?
Yeah, Us Country, swimming, tennis, soccer, Nordic Ski, gymnastics. Yeah, those are all, any program that we consider 7-12 or our JV is often times we have our 7-30. We don't have a separate, you know, super.
Sure.
Seven main, so basketball, football, volleyball, those track, they are not.
Any other questions on the activities? I will just make a comment real quick on the You Win in the Locker Room and the Zoom sessions, that they were really well done and good stuff about just climate and culture and what kind of climate and culture we want to have here in Fergus. And I think we, you know, by our sportsmanship award shows the kind of climate and culture that what we do have, what we can always improve on it. I thought it was very, very well done, especially in these times, and trying to make sure that we could connect as a group. That was well done. So thank you for that, Derek. Thank you. So we're going to move on to our other reports. So we have Kirby Anderson, our 544 Education Foundation and Finance.
Nothing on finance today, but on the 544 Education Foundation. Their regularly scheduled meeting, we would meet this Thursday. We continue to not meet in person. We're also not meeting on Zoom. They're doing just about everything through email and phone calls. And quite a bit of activity this last month though. The Lake Region Hospital has donated $5,200 per year for the next six years to the foundation. We're also continuing to put up, receive grant evaluations from the teachers that have gotten grants. Each of them, when they get the grant, they'll give us an evaluation of what they use the money for, what they bought, how we use, how to improve things for them, including pictures. So we're continuing to get those back in. We did have a program where we raised just over $5,000 for our high school seniors this year and gave them gift cards. I think Mindy Fuhrer bought 170 gift cards at $33 each from 17 different restaurants in town. So that went over real well. And then unfortunately, we're seeing more cancellations. The Legends Golf fundraiser this summer has been canceled. That is our biggest individual fundraiser outside of donations. So that has been canceled because of the pandemic, as well as the staff reunion that the foundation sponsors every year. So that's all I have from the foundation. Any questions?
Any questions for Kirby? Thank you, Kirby. Melanie Cole, Specialite Co-op, Region One and Activities.
Activities, subcommittee hasn't met, so there's nothing to report there. Specialite Co-op hasn't met since our last meeting. And then Region One, the Technology Support Group for the school districts and other West Central Minnesota businesses. Met and just routine stuff, talking about how it's working, having a mobile work staff, and who's signing up for synergy and all that kind of just everyday stuff, but nothing extraordinary. Clearly, the director in that operation is looking forward to having his staff return to the office, so. That's all I have, not much.
Any questions for Melanie? Thank you, Melanie. Missy Hermes, Staff Development and Policy.
I don't have anything to report on policy. I'm talking about that later in the meeting today, but Staff Development met on Monday, June 1st. And some of the things that they talked about their budget for next year would be a little bit larger just because funds were left over that weren't used this year. And also, there's going to be a big fall in service in August for teachers K through six regarding the new reading curriculum that we have, the Wonders Curriculum. So all teachers will be, and that's, I guess, will be a one whole day of training for them on how to use that. And that committee is still working on ways of really being intentional with the use of that funds. That it be, that there'll be, yeah, being intentional and making sure that it's benefit to everyone in the department or everyone at a grade level. So appreciate that. Then work with that committee, and that committee is going to stay the same. So because of, again, the pandemic, if we decided it would be with the input of the superintendent, it would be best to keep that committee as it was as we work through to next year.
Questions for Missy? Thank you, Missy. Natalie Knutson, Wellness and Buildings and Grounds.
I have nothing to report for either. Wellness hasn't met since March, and Buildings and Grounds, other than like in school kind of breaking ground. And then I moved today to just taking a peek over at Roosevelt to see what might be able to transpire. And the couple approvals that we've done with the tennis court resurfacing, we, there's nothing else to report.
Thank you, Natalie. Under my reports on the Us Country Service Co-op, I just had sent, we did meet in May 14th of last month. And just one of the things that they did as a group is one of the things, they had a regional networking that they were doing within our region. And one of the things is some distance learning and just some of the common feedbacks of what's working, what's not working on distance learning, and then some discussion questions and just how they could be improved and stuff like that. So I thought it was just some really good information for all school districts, you know, to be able to look at and just kind of have a discussion. And it's nice to have, I guess, more people, more hands to look at it and be able to have that discussion because no matter what, we are all in this together, and all school districts have been working on this. So, and I think there's some common things that all students, all school districts have been dealing with just with technology and connecting with students and things of that nature, so. So I thought that was good. The Minnesota High School League, they did meet June 1st, and it was very active. So one of the things I just talked about is right now, that June 15th is kind of the, where coaches can now again have contact with their players in person with guidelines. It's interesting, the league is one of 70 youth sports providers that are represented on a roundtable with the State of Minnesota Commissioner to help create a model for reopening youth sports. So there's a huge group of people that are working on this to see how we can, in the State of Minnesota, reopen, do it responsibly. And I'm sure there's some great discussion and some great disagreement and things of that, but trying to do it the best they can. And so it was just kind of interesting how many different youth sports that were involved in this, trying to have as many people at the table to discuss this. One of the things is the league also received from the federal government is that Paycheck Protection Program. They received $790,000. $580,000 of that is in a grant. And again, that was to, that you, so they did qualify for that program. It's interesting because they must be able to just, how they work and stuff like that, they did qualify. So I thought that was an interesting thing that's come out of this. One of the things is also to talk about is our fees. And I know Derek's here, and he can maybe talk about real quick about just an increase in our fees per sport, or not per sport, per activity, plus a student increase. And this is again to help them with their budgets. And Derek, if you wanted to share real quick on that.
Yeah, they, I believe it was, it was about a month ago, it was about $160, was that right? It used to be $100.
$150, right?
$150, yeah.
It used to be $100, now it's going to be $150?
Now it's $150. Part of that is the finances that they're going through anyway. Missing the State High School League itself, where they make the majority of their money, other than that, are the tournaments. And actually not having spring probably helped them a little bit. I know as far as our region goes in the conference, we're better off right now because we got through our winter tournaments, and we had spring off the cost of money when it comes to tournaments. But missing part of the girls' state basketball tournament, a portion because of, obviously, the bodes were down, and the last couple of days were canceled, missing the entire boys' state basketball tournament. Hurt them a lot financially. But, so it did go up, there was tops of that anyway. But then that did happen. So it was $150 per activity, comes to a hundred. So with our activities, that ended up costing us, whatever it is, 34 times 15.
And then there was a per student, like a dollar per student increase in activity fee or something like that, just for?
Yeah, the only one that we've, that I filled in was the, I have to fill in by June 1st is the number of activities we're going to offer. And then, yeah, that one from $100.
But we have not increased our fees for our student athletes or activities, participants. Yeah, and I would, it seems to me that the State High School League, part of the reason they're in such trouble isn't as much COVID as it is their expansion on their website and poor money management. So I really would hedge to see us penalize our athletes for their mismanagement. And I hope we can resist that.
No, and it has been, like I said, this wasn't due to COVID-19. This is due, losing some sponsors and just, like they said, the computer. And I do have to talk a little bit about that because they, the league staff is providing an update on technology. They are going to release, it's scheduled to release in July, the first, mid-July, the first phase of a new computer upgrade. And I don't know what that is, but they said that we'll be releasing it, so we will see.
Do they have Zoom meetings?
Yes.
Yes.
They have it. Oh, they suddenly now were able to do that.
What is this computer that they're upgrading? Is it like this supercomputer or is it just a laptop? What computer is it that they need to upgrade? That's going to cost every school $50 per student? Do you know, or, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just?
You know, one of the server, I know their server has been limping along, and I, you know, I don't know exactly what all the details with the server. And I know that was, I want to say that was $450,000 to do the upgrade, and that's on their whole computer system. So it was a significant, right around that 400, $450,000 or something like that.
GoDaddy.com.
Yeah. So it was interesting, the amount of cost. And then part of that was also bringing on somebody with technology, because they have not had somebody.
For over a year.
For over a year that they weren't paying, and so they brought somebody on. So there was a cost of that, and that's a part of it. And so, yeah, it's just a tremendous amount of, you know, I think some things hit the, where they lost some revenue, increase of expenses, some old infrastructure that they had not budgeted in, you know, prior to the new director coming in, that he had not budgeted into his, about doing a replacement. And so it all hit kind of at one time, and here it is.
And then it was trending with the attendance. COVID obviously hurt them with the boys' state tournament, things like that, but people attending tournaments is down across the board over the last three, four years. Their streaming capabilities and the venues are getting more expensive. The demand is to be at the Target Center, at these big venues that can host them, and they're, it's not, it's getting more and more expensive. US Bank is the best deal we have, that's seven free gates. You don't have to pay anything, or the State High School doesn't have to pay anything for football and soccer because that was a taxpayer building. They get to just keep all the concessions and things like that. So that's part of it, as it was building, and they're asking about it. They're trying to add more constellations like they did basketball, if that's what's best for kids. But it's millions of dollars to add a constellation, and nobody's going. I have heard, other than this, first two years we had constellation. Fergus happened to be in it, and they did very well, if you look at their numbers. When Fergus is not in the constellation for basketball, they do very poorly. I'm just going to say that, right? It's in the numbers. But that's what they're going through.
Let the officials know that.
Yeah, we did. I was talking to the first year I was talking to him, and that was there. And he said, if we can have Fergus in here every year, we can run this constellation every year. And I was the State High School League official there. Because we brought a band, we filled, and great. And the teams that we played there did not. They had a couple parents that left the world to come watch.
You know, Matt, you've tracked the high school league so diligently for so many years, and you've seen this coming, that there have been issues, and now it landed with a splat, and.
They tried to raise some issues too, I think.
Yeah, yeah, with MSBA, and they just, yeah, they decided not to go that route.
Did they have elections for officers? Or is it, how do they, how do they select their board and their, is it kind of an open election?
No, it's a number, there's a few, there are, from our directors, so I think there's two, if I remember right, one or two from our MSBA direct, you know, directors. And the board get on it. I think there's some ADs that are on there.
ADs, superintendents, principals. It rotates the position, so you don't always, like, we're AA, our region, we don't always have a superintendent. They'll rotate out, and then we'll get representation from an AD or another administrator or a school member. And the same way we operate our region, so it rotates around. And there are elections to have many advisory boards. They do ask us some things, they don't always listen. People run everything as a region, and we're usually pretty unified. And we have these same conversations for our region leaders.
I think it's interesting that they're, they're kind of going after money wherever they can, so it's pretty indicative of the problems they're having. I mean, for instance, we didn't have spring sports this year, and they had a proposal to give the schools $300,000 back, which I voted out. They also had a proposal to refund the officials for their spring, for their officials that they have to pay registration fees. And of course, none of the officials got to work, but they didn't get refunded their registration fees either. I think there's also, there's a Minnesota State High School League Foundation, and I believe the, is it with a ticket sales or something goes through, kind of a path through, through the State High School League to the foundation. Now they're talking about circumventing that and putting it right into their fund. They've also pride themselves on never having to be dependent on legislative taxpayers, but now they've gone to the legislature to ask for money. So, I mean, they're looking for money everywhere. And I know they get some criticism from different places too, on some of the salaries, you know, too. And especially now when there's no sports, what are we paying to do? So there's a lot of controversy going on right now. There's a lot of articles and a lot of opinions out there, but they're struggling, there's no doubt about it.
Yeah, so I'm hoping, I think they're hoping like everybody else, that in the fall, we're all reopened again. They can kind of get moving to normal.
To reiterate again, like Melanie was saying, we are not raising our fees to students, but even though they're raising the fees.
Correct.
We are not doing that.
We're not passing it through, yeah. Our fees and everything are staying the same. So, yeah. The other things they did do, they did talk about some recommendations and then just on wrestling with. Now, this is kind of interesting, that your wrestler can participate both in JV and varsity on the same meet, match, or quad or triangular, and it only counts as one event. So they must be only able to wrestle so many events per week? Is that kind of, so not to get it?
It's because you oftentimes leave one blank if you don't have someone that can wrestle in varsity match. And you feel a lot of pressure to at least fill that spot in varsity. And it's not necessarily what's best for the kid because they're going to be overmatched. So allow them to wrestle in the JV where they're a little better fit, but then they can also wrestle in a weight class in varsity, similar to what we do in other sports, where you can play half the basketball and then go play the, like we have tonight, full periods in hockey, things like that. Play a little JV, a little bit of varsity.
So that was one. And then, let me see. Sorry, I'm taking so much time here, but they were very active. This was a very active meeting, a lot of decisions were made. And, yeah, I think that's, I think that handles most of my report on the Minnesota High School. High School League. They will be meeting again July 14th is their next board meeting, so we'll see what they come up with next. So, so that, any questions? Any additional comments? Steve Vigas, Legislative Liaison, Meet and Confer and Curriculum Review.
I don't have anything to report for Meet and Confer and Curriculum Review. And I'll try to keep my legislative comments brief. They ended their session. The, with the pandemic, really only one bill passed. And on that bill, it was, I guess it's kind of a theme just to assist schools with what it, what has happened. You know, they're allowing, you know, funds to be moved within the budgets to kind of shore up accounts within a budget that was underutilized or overutilized versus underutilized. Normally you can't really do that. They loosened up the truancy referrals, you know, they're not being triggered by absences for obvious reasons. There's going to be some federal funds coming, 200 million for Minnesota, that's going to be distributed equally among the districts. And then the governor's going to be having some money that he can use to provide grants. Not a lot of detail on that yet, but that's, there's some money coming. It's, it's nice, but I don't think it's enough from what the MSBA, it's just, it's something, I guess. It's not going to, it's not going to shore up school districts that are really struggling, but it's, I guess it's something. Let's see here. There was not a bonding bill at all, but the governor will probably, in a few days, he's anticipated to call a special session for, for a bonding bill. Oh, what else? The MCA's were waived for 2020. So really, I guess like I said, it's just a theme of they're just trying to help districts out and loosen some of these guidelines that are just not very possible. They're also seeing, you know, and then, you know, just seeing a drop in achievement just given the circumstances where most districts had, you know, eight days to prepare basically a brand new curriculum and a lot of students struggled. So not, you know, it was, it was kind of a lackluster end to legislative session, but understandable given the circumstances. So, so we'll be looking forward to 2021 and putting this dumpster fire of a year behind us. So that's about all I have for my report right now.
Any questions or comments for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Subtend Drake.
Yes, good morning. I thought for my report, we would just touch base on some of the survey responses from the parents on our distance learning. We are up to 827 responses now, which I thought was terrific feedback from our parents. They were very open and honest with us about what went well, what they were pleased with, as well as areas that should we go down this path again, things that we could do to improve the educational experience, both from a student and from the parent perspective. So you see, we had a pretty good representation across all grade levels in terms of survey responses. The vast majority still coming out of KSS building because it serves the largest number of students in the district. First question I want to review is how satisfied or dissatisfied are you with your child's distance learning experience? Five being highly satisfied or very satisfied and a one being not so much. So when you look at basically the percentage of parents that indicated four or a five, that's, that's a good showing. I think it speaks to the job that teachers were, were doing and the administration in support of the student learning. And then I also end up looking, taking a look at the number that are dissatisfied, which was about 13% that were ones and twos. Again, I would consider those that a good, a good positive reaction by the parents. The next question that we asked was the amount of homework assigned to your child during the distance learning was, too much about right or not enough? And almost 77% said about right, about 18% saying too much, and very few indicating not enough, 5% there. Expectations for the completion of assignments were clear. 75% responded in the positively, and another 16% of you add those that were more neutral on it. Only about 8% felt that the expectations for completion of assignments were unclear. So again, I would take that as very, very good, very good response, positive response on the work that was being done. Then we go into communication. Communication, "If your child's teacher met your expectations..." Again, we're sitting at about that 75% mark, that are fours and fives and another 16% that are positive, but maybe more, a little bit more on the neutral side. And under 10% where we didn't meet their expectations. "The quality of the activities and assignments the teacher gave your child met your expectations." Again, around that 70% this time, percent very positive, another 20% positive, but more in the positive neutral, I would call it. And then only about 8%, 7% that were dissatisfied there. From there, the survey allowed parents to indicate what went well, what didn't go so well, and then a general question where they could simply make comments or suggestions to us. And I have not reviewed all the responses yet. I will plan to close the survey probably at the end of the day today or tomorrow. But with 824 responses, 827 it looks like, it's just really good data for us moving forward. And I do think that it speaks highly of the efforts that were undertaken to make this a positive experience. With the caveat, what we did tend to hear over and over again is we would rather they were in the building, getting education in the classroom. We understand the challenge, we appreciate what you did, but we hope when September 8th comes, we've got kids coming out of buses and entering in, into our school buildings. So I do want to especially thank the parents for their candidness in, in responding to the survey and the number of them that took the time to do it after what's been, you know, a pretty grueling two and a half months of trying to keep up with their job expectations and running a household and helping their children stay on top of academic expectations. So much, much appreciated. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
I, I didn't think to give you a heads up on this before, but what, do you have any kind of a framework for how we're going to decide for September? Is it simply going to be decided by the state? Or do you have any kind of insight? Because I know a lot of parents are so curious about that.
So up to this point, the governor's decisions have really driven what we're allowed to do. And right now, I'm anticipating that that will stay, kind of stay the course. Now that we're seeing the gradual reopening of businesses and organizations, I would suspect the state will take a look at that and see if we, we have a resurgence in, in new COVID-19 cases. If not, the president of the University of Minnesota came out and said she is planning to open the U of M with kids on campus next fall. That's a, you know, that's a huge piece politically for her to come out and make that statement. And I think it would lend itself unless the data starts to skew to the negative. Again, I'm speculating here, but I would say we're on a path where September 8th, we, we would have kids back in the building. And I hope that's the case. If not, there are some districts that have essentially set up tasks, task force already, planning for multiple possible scenarios. Probably the most common one would be some hybrid form of education where you have kids in the building some days, but not others. So it's a combo, face-to-face instruction and distance learning. I'm not opposed to some pre-planning, but I really don't want to spend a lot of time when we don't know what's in front of us. You know, you end up throwing kind of darts at, at the wall. And I would probably prefer to wait till maybe around August 1st, see what the governor's saying and what the, the climate is like out there when we have more, a little more definition about what we're allowed or not allowed to do. And that will still give us time to put a, a plan together.
Thank you.
You went and see the governor allowing it to be more like a regional or breaking the state into regions just because of equity and things of that nature? Because if we're able to open in a state down in the Twin Cities area they cannot, the fear of lawsuits because of that? Or how is that, how would that factor into it?
So far, what we've seen from the governor's office is kind of all or nothing. Either, either you're all going to be open or you're all going to be closed. And, you know, even, even to the extent that we weren't able to conduct classes with IQ Academy, which was an established distance learning program because of the equity piece. So personally, just going based on the decisions that already have been made and the history of those, I would be surprised if he makes decisions, if he opens up flexibility based That's all I have, otherwise.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on to our general consent items, we have the minutes for the May 26 board meeting, Board, Board Bails Report.
Yes. Missy Hermes and I came in this morning and met with Blake and we did review the bills. I would say as far as dollars go, it wasn't, it was one of our smaller months, but as far as number of transactions, it was one of our bigger ones. We had a lot of, a lot of student activity fees and fees that had been put down for band trips or, and a lot of the things that, that got canceled. And so we refunded a lot of those. The only exceptions would be if any money was raised through fundraising. We can't, we're not allowed to refund that money to the people that did the fundraising. They can donate that money to a nonprofit cause or they can give it to next year's class or something like that. So, but a lot of the, there was over a couple hundred checks that went out to, to students and parents for, for fees that they had paid for activities that did get canceled. So that was, there was a lot of volume even though there wasn't a lot of dollars there. Some of the notable checks that went out, we did have a pass-through of $10,000 that we got from the Minnesota Twins that we passed through to the city for our girls' fast pitch softball field upgrade. We got some, about $5,000 that went to a kitchen design for our, for our home program. No, home, Lincoln, okay, yep. $2,500 for the graduation broadcast to Lake's Radio. Appreciate what they did, they seemed to go pretty well. Got a nice night for fireworks and a lot of, a lot of thanks to all that worked on that and made that happen. More engineering is working with us on coordinating the upgrade of the tennis courts and the parking lots, so $17,000 went there to them. More paint supplies. And we did have $14,000 that we had to put in towards a new firewall that expired June 1st on our computer systems. And Blake was able to find the program, so we had to pay a little less than half of the, the district funds because of the program that he was able to find. So thanks for that. As far as our fund balance, again, we didn't have a lot of dollars going out, so we are sitting, sitting in pretty good shape right now. So appreciate it. Blake's tenant is detail-oriented in style, is doing a good job. Missy, do you have any?
No.
Thanks for coming in early.
I love it. I love coming in early.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three is personnel. Subtend Drake.
All right, under Certified Staff Resignations, we have Michelle Hokas, who was a work-based learning teacher with IQ Academy. We have Certified Staff Hires, Emily Shaki, who will be a fifth grade teacher, and Eliza Robertson, who will be special ed, a special ed teacher. We have a Support Staff Retirement with Renee Rocco, Media Center Secretary. I do want to thank Renee for her dedicated service to the district and wish her a very happy retirement. We have a Support Staff Hire, James Thorsted, who will be a summer grounds crew worker. A Coach and Co-Curricular Resignation, Dane Froiland, resigning from his position as One Act Play Director. And again, thanks to Dane for his contributions with that.
With that, do we have someone to offer a motion to approve the general consent items? Steve, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Kirby. Any discussion?
I just wanted to say one thing. Michelle Hokas, she's the first one on there. She's, she's, she has a place on our lake and I happened to run into her yesterday. She, she really appreciated work with the IQ Academy, it wasn't going to work well for her. She lives in Stillwater full-time and lives up here in the summer. She had good things to say about Ryan Johnson, so I just didn't pass that along. She said she always appreciated working with him and she thought he was a class act and so I just wanted to share that.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Matthew Lumpy?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes? Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Thank you. There is no old business. Moving on to our new business, item number one, we are going to table. That has not come in yet, so we're going to table that item. Item number two is the invitation for quotes for milk and related products. Melanie Cole, would you like to offer that motion?
Yes, I knew that we had quotes for milk and related products.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll, roll call, please.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lumpy?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes? And Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Item number three is the 2020-2021 Fergus Falls Public School Grades K-12 Student Parent Handbook and Revisions to the School Board Policy, Policy 506, Student Code of Conduct and Discipline Policy, and Policy 565, Acceptable Use Policy Agreement for Student Electronic Devices. We had some of that. Do I have a motion first to approve this?
So move.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion or comments? Roll call, please.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lumpy?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes? Stephen Vigasa?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Item number four is a Resolution on the Retirement of Renee Rocco. Whereas Renee Rocco began her employment with the Fergus Falls Public Schools in August 1993, and whereas Renee has been a valued employee with the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past 27 years, whereas Renee has done an excellent job as a middle school secretary and middle media center secretary for the district, and now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Renee Rocco for her 27 years of dedicated service to the Fergus Falls Public Schools. Will somebody offer that resolution, move for its adoption?
I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
Thank you, Missy. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Melanie. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knudsen?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lempke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
Stephen Biggessa?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. That concludes our regular school board meeting. We will be going into a work session to talk about spring coaches, distance learning, and facilities. Our next regular school board meeting will be Monday, June twenty-second at seven a.m. here at the Media Center at Kennedy Secondary School. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Kirby, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lempke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes?
Yes.
Stephen Biggessa?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are adjourned.